Before being present, this special town meeting will come to order. The warrant for this special town meeting was signed by the Board of Selectmen on April 25, 2011. It was published in the May 5, 2011 edition of the Middleborough Gazette. It was posted by Constable Sean Joyce on May 3, 2011. Therefore, I declare that the requirements of Chapter 2, Section 3 of the General Laws, General Bylaws of the Town and Chapter 39, Section 10 of the Massachusetts General Laws have been satisfied. The moderator and Town Clerk have appointed the following as tellers for town meeting tonight. On the left side, my left is Marilyn Hunt, and on the right side is Bob Canessa. In the middle, center front stage is Gayle Everts, and the center right is Joanne Uppland. And all of the above have been sworn in by the Town Clerk. This meeting will be operated in accordance with Massachusetts General Laws, the Town's General Bylaws, and by the precedent of prior town meetings. While the Town Bylaws address some of the parliamentary procedures, prior town meetings have relied upon the volume of town meeting time as a standard for conduct at Lakeville Town Meetings. It is my intention to continue this precedent. You will note that two microphones have been positioned in each of the two aisles. I ask that you seek recognition from the moderator. You go to one of the two microphones. There's one right down here and one right down there. You must be at the microphone to be recognized by the moderator. When recognized by the moderator, please state your name. If you would like to identify your address, please feel free to do so. If you have a motion, please have it prepared in writing, and after stating your motion, please present it to the moderator so that the clerk will have it as part of the official record of this meeting. Unlike many towns, we have no standard relative to the length of time someone can speak. Generally, this has not been an issue. However, I will exercise my prerogatives to keep this meeting moving, and if I find that the speaker repeats the same points that he or she has raised, I will ask them to refrain from speaking. Shouting from seats, booing, cheering individual speakers cannot be permitted. Any member who interrupts the town meeting in an unacceptable way will be escorted out. Such a member may not return. Do not lose your vote. Please stick to the acceptable town meeting behavior. As it has been past practice, I will allow the maker of the motion an opportunity to speak on the motion before recognizing anyone else. After the maker of the motion has had an opportunity to speak, I will seek the recommendation of the Finance Committee. Then, any other registered voter may speak on the article in question. When the motion comes to a vote, I will ask you to hold up the blue-colored voting card issued to each registered voter when you arrived this evening and were checked in. During voting, you can easily determine the quantum of... During voting, if I can easily determine the quantum of vote, I will ask you to lower your card. However, if there's a counted vote, I will ask you to hold your card up during the voting and keep it elevated so that the tellers can see it and count the votes in your section. The use of the voting card will assure that only the votes of registered eligible voters are counted. Your voting card has a yes and a no printed on it. This is printed in case we have a ballot vote. We may not use it as a ballot, but we have that just in case. Do not lose your voting card. You cannot get another one this evening. Motions to reconsider or rescind. A motion to reconsider can only be made by one who voted on the prevailing side. A motion to reconsider is acceptable only if new information has come to light that might have caused members to vote otherwise had the information been available earlier. A motion to reconsider is not acceptable simply because many people have left. This is a parliamentary ploy, and it will not be allowed. A motion to reconsider must pass by two-thirds vote by Lakeville Bylaw. By past town tradition, a motion to reconsider an article can only be made once. I would like to remind everybody that no food or drink is permitted in the auditorium. And before we begin the special town meeting, I would like to call to your attention to those residents of Lakeville who were active in town government and who have passed away since our last town meeting. Florence M. Lewis was active in Lakeville Town Government. She served on the Council on Aging from 1982 to 2004. She was involved with Old Colony Elderly Services and a member of the Lakeville Cultural Council from 1993 to 1997. Let us all stand, and I'd like to ask for a moment of silence in her memory. Please remain standing after the moment of silence and honor our country by saluting I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic, the home of our citizens, the one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, and just as Before we get started, I'd like to introduce everybody present here at the head table. My name is Aaron Burke, for anybody that doesn't know. Janet Tracy is our Town Clerk. Next to Janet is Rita Garbutt, Town Administrator. Kaye Doyle is Town Council. Steve Olivier is Board of Selectmen Member. Derek Maxey is a selectman. Scott Bellevue is a selectman. Next to Scott is Mike Petruzzo of the Finance Committee. Melissa Hopkins is next on the Finance Committee. Norman Oral, Finance Committee. Ted Bond, Finance Committee. Donna Winter, Finance Committee. And Cindy McCray is the Town Accountant. Now that we've started, does everybody have a copy of the town meeting warrant articles? Everybody have one? All right, good. That's a good start. Now that we have them, I seek a motion to waive the reading of the warrant. Okay, a motion has been made and seconded to waive the reading of the warrant. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed? Okay, we will not read the warrant. At this point, I am going to seek the approval of non-resident speakers. I'll need a motion for purposes of allowing Attorney Michael Scott and Kevin Klein to potentially speak on one of the articles. Okay, it has been moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed? Okay, that passes. Okay, on to Article 1.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the Town vote to transfer and/or appropriate from available funds certain sums of money in order to defray unanticipated costs for the fiscal year 2011 for various accounts in the General Fund and the Water Enterprise Fund, and all as set forth on the document titled Article Number 1, Special Town Meeting Transfers, May 23, 2011.
Okay, the motion has been made and seconded. I'd like to hear from the Finance Committee if they could give us their recommendation,
Yes, by unanimous vote, the Finance Committee is ordered to recommend this approval of this article.
Okay.
Do you want me to read the transfers?
Sure, if you'd like to read the transfers, then you can speak to the article.
This is a typical housekeeping transfer of funds that we do at the special town meetings, and it's to take monies from funds that haven't overspent to move into fund to categories that have overspent or deficit spending positions to make the budget accounts penalized. So, the first appropriation, transfer appropriation fund is the Water Enterprise Fund in direct cost for the SRF loan in the amount of $37,695.2. Also coming from free cash is $69,000 even, and coming from unemployment account is $20,000. Coming from the reserve for further appropriation is $15,000. These monies are being transferred to the debt service interest loan for the SRF in the amount of $37,695.2. Transfer to the vote get out of district tuition and transportation in the amount of $60,000. Transfer to Town Office and Fire Station expense of $6,000, and the Cable Advisory Committee legal fees of $3,000, and also the legal fees of $35,000. The totals of transfer... Okay, now, down below is... So, the total of all the transfers from is $41,695.2, and the same amount going to. And then below that is a transfer from the Water Enterprise Fund of $37,695.2 going to the General Fund, same amount.
Okay, thank you.
Want me to speak to it?
Sure.
Okay. The Water Enterprise Fund is just a mechanism to take money out of the Enterprise Fund, move it to the General Fund so we can pay the debt service on that loan. This is typical of how that debt service will be paid going forward in the future, so you'll see this again. The free cash, we have $269,000 right now that hasn't been certified, but that's the number the Town Accountants work with for FY10, so we decided to take $69,000 out of that. The unemployment account, we have $25,000 left in that account, and we're using about $1,500 a month. We have a couple more months left for this fiscal year, so we can, we feel comfortable in using $20,000 on that account. Reserve for further appropriation, $15,000. That's an old reserve amount from a barn premium that we had, but we never appropriated it, so, and I think it's related to Ted Williams' camp at debt, so we decided to move that as well. Going to the debt service for the SRF, we talked about that. Vote Get Out of District Tuition and Transportation has to do with students that go to Bristol Aggie and also one that goes to Norfolk County Aggie. The Town Office and Fire Station expenses for basically fuel, the additional cost for fuel this year. The Cable Advisory Committee legal fees, $3,000. We budgeted $5,000 for two years because we were anticipating negotiating a contract this year, but the activity has moved quicker than the budget, so we've actually spent $8,000, which means we'll be spending less money next year because we budgeted $5 for each year. The legal fees, $35,000, has to do with a couple of things. One of them has to do with Cisco, the amount of $12,000 of the big drivers, and another one was Clark Shore home that we had to demolish. That ended up costing about $15,000, and this was just regular activity.
Okay, thank you. This needs to pass by majority vote, and I don't see anybody lining up to talk to this, so I think I... Oh, wait a second.
Hi, my name's Kate Co. Oral, Crooked Lane. I just had a question about the legal fees. I'm wondering if the Cisco, the $12,000 for Cisco and the Clark Shore home demolition or demolition, those were all approved by the selectmen? Or who authorized the use, the overage of the legal fees?
Well, when we budget the legal fee account, that and the Stone Ice account is typically budgeted at an amount that's somewhat lower than you actually incur. We budgeted the legal account to, we reduced it down to $30,000. It used to be at $40,000, but in most years it overran the $40,000. So, did the Selectmen authorize the legal effort to do the demolition? Yes, we did. And we also authorized the legal cost for the Cisco as well.
Mr. Moderator, who smells wine? How much money did you spend to vote for the test engagement, the retirement for Chief Sorrell last year? How much money was that in legal fees? It's over $14,000. Is that correct? Is that correct? I don't know if it is. Where is it? Is it coming from? Up today? Here. Was that the correct amount?
I don't have that information with me right now because that was something that happened in the past. But we can get that information. She can't say for sure.
Well, I gotta let her say it was over $14,000.
Okay, so you know better than anybody up here on the stage.
Normally, when someone retires, you spend that amount of money for a legal fee. Mr. Gaddick? Do you jerk your questions through me? Oh, sorry, Mr. Moderator. How much money does it normally spend when someone retires for legal fees? I don't think there's any money involved.
What's that?
I don't think there's any money from law, normal retirement.
Okay. Do you question?
Well, you didn't bring that up in the financial for the legal fees earlier.
It's not in this budget, it's in the previous budget. It's not even, it's not in this article, and it was part of last year's transfers.
Okay, at this time, I think I'd like to call the vote. All those in favor of the transfer, a yes vote will do the transfer, a no vote will not do the transfer. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed? Okay, Article 2. I move that the Town vote that the Selectmen are hereby authorized to negotiate and require by purchase eminent domain or otherwise a feasible interest in all or a portion of 5.87 acres located at 338, 340, and 344 Bethurst Street, shown on the Lakeville Assessors map, 57 block 1, lot 6, 7, and 8, for general revisable purposes, in that an amount not to exceed $450,000 is appropriated for such purpose and for the payment of the cost of cleanup, rehumiliation, and/or other costs related to such acquisitions, including survey, legal, or other costs incidental and related thereto. That to meet this appropriation, the Town Treasurer for the approval of the Selectmen is hereby authorized to borrow an amount not to exceed $450,000 under Chapter 44 of the General Laws or any other enabling authority. That the Selectmen are hereby authorized to take or related action necessary to complete the transaction provided. However, that no sum shall be borrowed or expanded hereunder unless and until the Town shall have voted to exclude the funds required to repay any bonds or notes issued hereunder from the limitations of Proposition 2 and 1/2 so called. Have a second for that, please? Okay, Finance Committee, what is your recommendation?
Well, after a fair amount of discussion, my majority vote, voters to recommend approval of this article for the purpose of letting the voters decide whether or not we want to spend any money. And we're just, the voters electing to negotiate a more favorable price. That is our recommendation.
Okay, thank you. Petitioner, would you like to speak?
Yeah, the, back in 2007, there was a committee formed to look at all properties in the town of Lakeville, municipal properties and other properties close to the town hall now. According to the recommendation of that clerk, they said if that parcel ever came up for sale, then we should take a look at it. And that's why I did, by petition, to bring it up, the townspeople, and let them decide if it's a good piece of property for the town to have or not.
Mr. Moderator, Bill Marks and Albrecht World, has anybody done a study as to what the value of this land is, or how much of it is wet, how much of it is buildable, whether it's what the coms are, and how much should we pay for it?
Petitioner, would it be Board of Selectmen? Have you been involved in any of this? Would you, okay, would you speak to that?
Okay. The answer to that question is not to my knowledge. This has been brought to the Board of Selectmen in the form of a petition, so we just had to review the petition before it came to town meeting, special town meeting, and we're not at that point yet where any of the analysis has been done of due diligence on the property.
I submit it would be more appropriate to do the due diligence and then to come up with an estimate of its value than to appropriate an amount, and then the seller knows how much they have. Probably disorder buyer for the property, so we may well be in the driver's seat. So, I think that the article should be amended to initiate a study to determine how to proceed rather than to go rushing headlong into spending money that we don't have. There's no speaking for it, I'm gonna have to get a piece of paper and a pen and come up with an amendment.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes?
If I may.
Sure.
This was brought to us by a petitioner, and, you know, some people think it's a good idea, some people don't think it's a good idea. I, for one, am on the fence on this, but as a selectman, I don't feel that I should even start pursuing this without this town meeting asking us to do that. I, for one, don't want to spend any money. We don't have it. However, there are some possibilities where we have additional lands like the fire station and the assessors office we may be able to sell in the future. So, all we're asking is, do you town folks want us to at least consider looking into this? We're not gonna purchase it, and especially not until you decide at town, at the annual town election whether we're gonna do this or not. Not the town election, excuse me, the special year. But it's just, do you want us to look at it or not? And it's up to you.
That's not what the article says.
Yeah, Town Council will explain that. Thanks.
The intent of this article is to place the matter on the ballot for vote to by town meeting. It also authorizes the Board of Selectmen to proceed if the Board of Selectmen choose to do so. It does not mandate that they proceed. So, they have the option, if you vote favorably on this article and the town votes favorably on the ballot, to pursue this and negotiate a price, as the Finance Committee noted, hopefully less than $450,000. But it doesn't require them to do so. It is authorization to proceed beyond this first step.
I move to amend the article to read $300,000 in place of $450,000.
Thank you. Mr. Marks, and I, it's town meeting tradition that amendments are submitted in writing, so I would ask if you could put something together that would be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Mr. Moderator, is it appropriate for me to ask you to allow me to just give a little contemporary background on this?
Perhaps in a minute. On the Bylaws and Regulations of the Town of Lakeville, Chapter 2 of Town Meeting, Section 12, "On Proposed Amendments Involving Sums of Money, the larger or largest amount shall be put to the question first, and in affirmative vote thereon shall be a negative vote on any smaller amount." So, from a procedural perspective, we're going to vote the $450,000 amount first. If that passes, the amendment has failed. If it doesn't pass, we will then vote the lower amount. That is what the bylaw says. Thank you.
Quite informative. Are you saying that there's a vote now on the larger amount? Well, is there an amendment pending? That's not how I recollect it's been done in previous town meetings.
Okay, I don't necessarily know what my recollection is of this particular procedural aspect, but I am going to defer to the Town Bylaw, which I just read, as how I'm gonna proceed with this.
Well, in that case, I call the question.
Well, I would like Mr. Seamus to have the opportunity to speak. He did get up there before.
I would go on my call.
Thank you.
Gentlemen and gentlemen, I just want to remind the Board of Selectmen and the townspeople that in 2007, a study was put forward by Castle Booze, an architectural firm, on this and another question about expansion. On this parcel of land, the recommendation, they did not recommend it at that time because of the exorbitant cost at that time, I believe. So, that study has been done, and they proposed that if we were going to expand the Town Office building or renovate it and expand the Fire Department, that other steps could be taken. And I'm not going to get into the footprint and where that would go. Currently, there is a feasibility study organized, we've had one meeting, to look into these situations. So, I don't know whether I'm saying it's a little premature to vote on this, or just to give you a bit of information that the feasibility study that was called by the Board of Selectmen, I think there were eight people on there, most are people of great integrity except one. And we've only had one meeting. We're reviewing the Castle Booze recommendations, and possibly we will come up with our own recommendation. But if it has passed at the regular town meeting, then what's the point? That's my point. What's the point? Thank you.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes?
I just wanted to clarify, I didn't mean the fire station, sorry, chief. I was actually talking about the police station, that's the building that we need to do something about. Just a clarification.
Thank you. It's tough for me to know... It's tough for me to know where the voices are coming from sometimes. Sorry. Uh, I, I think you may have been standing over there prior to this gentleman. Are you, okay.
Hi, Andrew Jotty. Uh, the question I have, do we still have a planning board?
I hope so.
When is the, uh, I mean, I hear like 2007, but this is 2011. Now that parcel, they should have, what's their input on that? Does the selectman know anything about that? On the planning board, are they aware of this?
Mr. Moderator? This is very soon in the whole process. Uh, it's, the town's not in the real estate business. Obviously, tonight it seems like we are. Uh, but this is one of those things where something is on the market and before the planning board, I mean, we don't know anything about the environmental issues. We don't know anything about our 21E's, anything about the septic or any of that. Uh, but the point is, do we even want to consider? I, uh, I hear so often how we should have bought the property to the left of the town hall. And, you know, it's a shame that we didn't buy that. All this is an opportunity to just look at it, see if it's something that does work for the town. And yes, every, if this board here, if this group here decides we should do this, then we'll look into it. Absolutely no commitment to purchase. Uh, so as far as the planning board and all the others, they haven't really had any input in this because we wanted your permission first.
All right, so if I understand, only because it was made, that it's up to the people to make the investment, but I don't think we're meant to invest in, uh, you know, spending our money. But what you're saying is this is not, if it's approved, it's only, uh, it's not approving to buy it. Is that correct?
Correct. All this board will be doing is giving us the authority to at least entertain purchase and sale with this and then to go to the ballot question and get permission to buy it from the, from the voters.
Okay, I understand.
Mr. Moderator, Keiko Orle. Um, my question is, if this property, if these properties have back taxes already owed to the town, could the town just wait until those properties are, are properties anyway, rather than purchasing them?
Absolutely.
I believe it's in tax time now. It's gonna be in tax time now. Well, soon.
Thank you.
Sorry, Mr. Marks?
Why, I'm dragging this question to the selectmen. Why do we need to stake some money if all we're doing is authorizing the board to discuss the matter and to, to come up with a proposal or a proposed purchase and sale agreement? We need no, we need no money at this time to have a committee study or to have a board study. Therefore, I would recommend that the article be amended in some form or defeated and, uh, once again, in another form, have the money attached.
Thank you.
Want to answer that?
Okay.
Because there's money on this parcel. And if this gets voted in, you give the permission to the selectmen at this point. And then you'd have to go to a ballot vote to go for two and a half override. If that was to occur, then you're pretty much giving the selectmen permission to go out and buy that property for the amount stated here. You're saying if we pass this, we're given, we're authorizing to, to, to the amount stated here? You, you're, this is a two-step process. One is with this particular vote. Second step is to go for a ballot vote for a debt exclusion. Two and a half override. Yeah, we're gonna have to do a debt exclusion anyway because we haven't got the money. All right, debt exclusion is distinct from a two and a half override. I understand that. But if we, if we come up with an offer from the owners of the property to sell it to the town, then we can go to a vote and, uh, and we can, uh, we can do the same thing. So I don't see what to say there. I think, I think all we're doing is showing our cards. And you just hit it on the head. This, we don't have the money to pay for it on the operation budget. Otherwise, you would be in a better position to do the negotiating. But because you need to go for a debt exclusion, you have to name something. You have to go after something. Yeah, but we don't, what's the point of going for a debt exclusion until we know what the price is? What, has, has, has the property been put on the market? And what price has it been listed for? $550,000. Okay, and it's, I mean, five acres, more or less? Yeah, more or less. How much of it is wet? Does that even know? It's almost six, there's three parcels, one, one of the biggest being a five something. How much of it is wet? Well, I... You've asked that question already, I don't know. We haven't done any due diligence on the wetness, uh, between 21E and the property. Uh, from, from what I understand, that's not the greatest property in the world. Along that, that area of town. Also, it's in proximity to, to, I think, someone mentioned town wells, should be difficult to place septic system. Well, there's town water that goes in front of that property now. We have a line that goes all the way to... Are there any town wells nearby? No. A pot, a water, drinking water. Well, I still think that it's ill-advised to say to someone money that we can study this perfectly well without stating the settlement in the article and then when the time comes, we can take the necessary steps to buy the property if that's what we decide we want to do. And I saw where it's the town to do.
Thank you. Sir, would you like to speak?
Yes, Paul Calucci. Um, I just want to say, anybody that knows me, I'm against buying almost every piece of property we bought in town since I've been in town with. Um, but there's something in real estate, around these meetings, thrown out all the time is once in a lifetime, once in a lifetime. There are truly few things that are only once in a lifetime and that's where what is property coming up to say. So it's on the market now. If somebody's gonna buy a strip plaza or something there, as the selectmen stated earlier, this would expand the town hall eventually, which will allow the assessors to move over, that will allow the police department to move over. Hopefully, the responsible sell those two pieces of property, which would offset the cost they're gonna spend for now. So even though I've never supported buying any property in the town, because I don't believe the town should be in the land acquisition business, I do believe that this is truly a once in a lifetime thing. We need to seriously at least give them the authority to take a look at it and see if it's gonna work out for our needs. Thank you.
Thank you.
Eric Greaseley, nobody's buying commercial property right now. I know.
Sir, some final thoughts?
Roger Pointe, Elvis Pondrath. Um, everybody talking here, I just thought about how, how old was buildings? Sixty, seventy, eighty years old? I'm sure the building codes were not what they are today. Just because we have buildings on that property today, doesn't mean you can drop anything. Even if it's a town building on that property. This all has to be more researched and I think everybody jumping into this too much. It's brashy with the money value. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. At this point, um, I need to inform the town meeting that this requires a two-thirds vote to pass. We're going to vote on the motion for the sum of $450,000. So I have, um, my counter, I see one. Where are the other ones? Who else is counting? Could you stand up? Oh, all right, there he is. We're gonna use the blue card. So anybody that's in favor of purchasing the land, please raise your blue card and hold it up so the counters can count you.
Sixteen.
Twenty-two. Ten. Fourteen.
Thank you. All those opposed, please raise your blue card.
Five.
Nineteen. Seventeen. Twelve.
Thank you. The motion has been defeated. Now we're going to vote the amendment, uh, amended number of $300,000, which we can discuss.
I'd like to, uh, recall the amendment, uh, substituted amendment and, uh, a committee we, uh, established to study the issue. I, I think it's more appropriate that no one is faking. So, uh, providing the second and the motion is sent, I, I defer it to Town Council to see what's the appropriate way to proceed. I'm not opposed to the concept of purchasing the property. I'm opposed to the method.
Okay. Let's just take a minute and let her take a quick look. Mr. Marshall, if you just want to hang on for a second, hold on.
All I wanted was to say is, oh, the, the numbers is...
Oh, I'm sorry, I should have read that. It was sixty-two, four, and fifty-three against. We, we have to, um, how this works is we have an amendment on, on the floor and we can either vote the amendment, but he has requested that it be withdrawn. So now we have to vote to withdraw it. And then if he would like to make a further amendment after we've taken care of this one, we can deal with that. But we're gonna do these in order or we'll get lost.
I move to amend the amendment to, uh, to, uh, strike any amount from the, uh, from the amendment. So we can vote on the amendment and then we can vote on the amendment to the amendment.
Yeah, that's, that's what I mean, we're all lost. Or I am at least.
No, what I'm suggesting, if you'd like me to clarify, is that if we defeat the amendment, is an amendment pending to, uh, to authorize the board to, to negotiate, but we know how to say, to study and negotiate.
Right now, there has been an amendment, um, motion made and seconded for purposes of, of having the $450,000 figure changed to $300,000.
I understand that.
And you, you came up and said you'd like to withdraw that.
Well, no, well, I, I understand that's awkward and you'd rather do it another way. So what I'm suggesting is I put an amendment out to what's before the town presently.
Right, but, but there, there's been, in, in, in town meetings of, of Lakeville, we typically have one amendment, we dispose of that one amendment before we make another one. Because you start getting amendments on amendments, it becomes...
Well, we disposed of the, the, we only have one. We're in the same position that we were before the, the article was defeated. We have an article before the, before the town.
I, this is an interesting conversation perhaps over coffee for, for us to have.
Do you have any coffee?
I don't want to necessarily bore the, the town meeting with this. I think from a procedural perspective, I just spoke with Town Council related to this and I'd like to just handle this by, um, voting, you know, withdrawal. And then if you would like to make an amendment, we'll, we'll proceed that way. Thank you. Okay. Okay, this is a majority vote. All those in favor of the withdrawal of the motion to have the figure not exceed $300,000 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Owe.
Okay. It sounds like the ayes have it. So the motion to withdraw passes by a majority vote.
I move to amend the article to read $1. I must Town Council think that's a terrible idea. I, I just think it's easier than, uh, than going through all the language and changing it. What was the money article? Something else.
Do we have a second for that?
Well, wait a minute, I'll withdraw any hearings from Town Council. I'd rather hear from Town Council first before we can position town to vote.
Well, if somebody's gonna second it, maybe we'll hear from Town Council. I don't know as if this is appropriate to... Okay.
The motion to amend was withdrawn. If you move now to essentially move to amend again, you're going to require, well, you're potentially going to require the town to go to a debt exclusion process for the purpose of $1. If you're suggesting that...
Oh, I understand that.
It's just something to consider.
Well, uh, counselor, what do we have to do to, to get the town to study this and to come up with a, a negotiated price that we can vote on in some future day?
Uh, Mr. Marks and, Mr. Moderator? Yeah, that's, that's what the, uh, the selectmen are in the process right now. My brother's selectman, Steve Oliver, he has actually kind of a feasibility study on these buildings. This is just because this came up kind of early. He'd love to have more time. So this will allow him to have more time to look at that property.
In that case, I move to table the motion. Mr. Moderator, I move to take no action on this.
Okay. A motion has been made and stated to table the motion to, um, to purchase this property for a dollar bargain. So that has been seconded. We're going to table this. Um, it's not debatable, it requires a two-thirds vote, uh, so we're gonna have to count it. All those in favor of tabling this, please raise your blue card.
Ten. Twenty-four. Twenty-one. Forty.
Thank you. All those opposed, please raise your blue card.
Zero. Zero. Zero.
It has been tabled. I...
Mr. Moderator, I'd like to ask if that now means the selectmen do not have the authority to pursue looking into this land or talking to the sellers or...
That is correct. They're, they're not authorized, well, no, I'll let, let them speak. I forget everyone is supposed to say anything. So keep the meeting going.
I'll give it a try, you know, Town Council. But the selectmen themselves can look into this. We could fund this through the operation budget or we could bring this back to the town meeting ourselves.
Okay, on to Article Three.
My name is Carol Tolls, I'm from 57 Long Point Road in Lakeville. This is Island Terrace. It is a motion under petition, Article III, moved to transfer from the Board of Selectmen for the purposes set forth in General Law, Chapter 40, Section 8C, to the Board of Selectmen for the purposes of conveyance, the care, custody, and control of parcel of land containing one acre, more or less, which land is a portion of the two town-owned properties located on Long Point Road, identified by the assessors as parcels 71-1-1-1 and 71-1-1-2, and described in a deed filed with Plymouth Registry District of the Land Court as document number 508923, and recorded with the registry in Book 22356, page 215, and in a deed filed with the Plymouth Registry District of the Land Court as document number 543809, and authorized the selectmen to convey said parcel on such terms and conditions, and for such consideration as the selectmen deem appropriate, and further to authorize the Board of Selectmen to petition the general counsel, excuse me, the general court, for approval of such conveyance under Article 97 of the Amendments to the Massachusetts Constitution, if such approval is deemed by the Board of Selectmen to be needed.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Finance Committee, what is your opinion on this?
I demand that we vote to recommend approval of this article.
Finance Committee voted to recommend approval of the article. Would you like to speak to the article, please?
Yes, this article is a request from Island Terrace to purchase approximately one acre of property to use as a leaching field for the Island Terrace nursing home at 57 Long Point Road. We're requesting this due to the fact that the site is a very, very sensitive, is in a sensitive area. We are surrounded by a drinking water supply on one side and cranberry bogs on the other. We have 77 clients who live with us and 116 people who take care of them. One of the main reason that we are requesting this is to get treated water from the facility as far away from the public drinking water supplies and wells as possible.
Sir, would you like to address town meeting?
Mr. Moderator, Emory Arnold, Chairman, Lakeville Conservation Commission. The property, St. Betty's Net property, is actually controlled by the Lakeville Conservation Commission, not the Board of Selectmen. It's owned by the town. And at our last meeting, Carol came before us and explained the situation, and we were unable to even get to a vote as to a united opinion because there's so much more information that's needed on this. There are many, many issues and hurdles that will have to be jumped over to get this done. There's a conservation restriction on that property held by the Department of Fisheries and Wildlife, and that State Department will absolutely not give up that conservation restriction on the parcel unless there is a net gain for Fisheries and Wildlife. Whether improvements to the Peach Barn will satisfy them or will require consequential restrictions on another piece of property or whatever, Fisheries and Wildlife will have to have a net gain, or they won't even entertain this, and it will have to be passed by Lakeville Conservation Commission as well. There may be legalities involved over whether this property can even be sold. Nonetheless, we were unable to come to a united decision, so I have no actual recommendation. I won't speak to my personal opinion to it, just so that the townspeople know. This is only the first step. It does not make it a done deal by any means. It's a long road to go down, and, you know, if it happens, it, you know, it'll be okay, I guess, whatever happens, but it's still, this is just the first, it's a long road. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Marston?
I'm curious. I see the information about the toilets. It's my understanding that from the information here that the toilets presently in operation require five gallons per flush, and that the new toilets that may be installed, or used, three ounces per flush. I am curious, it's my understanding that modern toilets are only going to be flushed, so we can reduce the effluent by a percent, might just change the kinds of toilets. But my question to the petitioner is whether or not if this goes forward, that all of, whether or not all of the toilets would be converted to these virus toilets.
I am Kevin Clyde from O'Fole Grand Group. Island Terrace currently has an ECO administrative consent order with the DEP that requires wastewater treatment, requires a wastewater treatment plant with groundwater discharge. Island Terrace has spent a lot of time looking into the use of composting toilets. At this time, the DEP has said if the discharge is sited on the island in proximity to the public water supply, surface water supply, and in proximity to their own onsite public water supply well, the composting toilets are not the solution that they will accept. If we can get it further away to a less sensitive area, the option of using composting toilets with gray water treatment again becomes a possibility.
Thank you.
I'm Marilyn Clay from O'Fole Grand Group. I have no objections to what they want, but the Island Terrace personally, I just wonder why the $100,000 has to go to one project with the town, excuse me, the town having so many budget problems in many, many areas.
Mr. Moderator, Steve will be especially glad to know that my attorney told me that there was no way that I had any say whatsoever over how the town spent the money.
This is, as Emory pointed out, the first step in a long road. There's many participants or partners in this whole thing, and everybody has to come to an agreement in order for this to move forward. I just found out it's the Conservation Commission that has control of it for the EEAC. You have the state legislators who are going to have to propose this for legislation to be approved. You have the proponent who's looking to get some satisfaction with their current situation. You have the town of Lakeville as well. And as Emory pointed out, and the Division of Fisheries and Wildlife too, who also holds the conservation restriction, they're going to want something in return probably, in a net gain situation, so that leads me to think that you're the proponent, or the town's going to have to come up with something to substitute for this as a swap. So, it's a long road ahead, it's never been done before, it's a huge challenge. But I think because the pressure that the DEP is putting on Island Terrace, and I don't think anybody in this room wants to see that business close down and have those folks have to move to somewhere else because it's a fantastic facility. I think everybody's going to have to work their hardest to make this, to see this come through. This particular article is just going to allow us to move forward so we can start the petition process ourselves with the legislators.
Thank you. Mr. Marston?
Yeah, I don't think Mr. Clyde answered my question. My question was, if this article is passed, does that mean that Island Terrace will install the virus toilets? And if not, will they install the one gallon per flush toilets in place of the five gallons per flush toilets?
Somebody like to answer that question?
Yes or no?
It's a bit tangential, but I'll allow it. On the fringe of the motion itself.
Island Terrace would like to continue using the composting toilet solution. If this motion passes, that still puts it out as an option for the DEP to consider. If it doesn't pass, DEP has said you're not going to use composting toilets as your solution on the island, with a discharge on the island. As to the lower water use toilets, as, I'll let the owners do that, but as they've been doing remodeling and everything else, they have to do it in accordance with the plumbing code, which mandates the lower flow toilets.
Thank you.
Hi, Colin, Sharon, Lakeside Avenue. I just have a couple of questions. First of all, I'd like to say I'm concerned about the precedent that this would set with the town just giving up or selling, in this case, little bits of property that we bought. I'm very familiar with this land, and I have a question with regards to maps. There are two red lines, if you look at the colored photos. One, if I'm looking at it correctly, appears to go out toward the main field, out by the Peach Barn. The other one goes a completely different direction, which I believe is, I guess it's land behind Long Point Road. So when you save one acre or thereabout, where is the one acre? Is it a half acre on Long Point, a half acre on the main field? What happens if they decide to go one way? They still have, and I assume they still have the land that they don't need. So where is the acre?
Thank you.
The acre has yet to be determined, and the reason that I put both of the locations in, actually technically, right now, if you look at the maps, there are three locations. And no, we wouldn't own one, a half acre on one part or a half acre on another. It would be one area. And they show the locations, so the one of them is out in the alfalfa field. The other one, that is in black and white, is located over the existing parking lot for the Peach Barn. The third one is owned by the public trust and is out in the property behind Long Point Road. But it would be one, it would be one area, it would not be, it could not be broken up into separate areas.
Thank you. I think that's very confusing here. And if we're going to buy it, I think, and we make that decision tonight, we should know what we're exactly buying, which property. To me, that makes a difference.
We're not proposing.
Yes, please answer that.
Sorry.
We're not proposing, the town is not proposing to buy any of it.
I apologize. If we sell it, to me though, it's important what we're selling. Right now, I don't know of any access in the area off of Long Point Road. If you sell a parcel that's in the field, personally, that makes a difference to me. And I think if, you know, people should know exactly what it is they're buying, but it doesn't sound like that's been determined yet. Furthermore, if the money is, well, and I guess that was partially clarified tonight, $100,000, if you develop the Peach Barn, that's just, you know, how is that going to be developed? Then it has to be maintained. What happens to that piece of property? I appreciate what they're trying to do, I just, I'm just trying to make you the bigger picture here and the long-term ramifications of this, and not knowing quite frankly what it is we're selling is concerning.
Thank you.
Mr. Moderator, just want to clarify, can you hear that? That $100,000 is not in the motion? And it's not. Kenneth, then that's on the table at this point for this motion.
Thank you. Sir?
Yes, Robert, a couple of things. I've heard, and I see you missing clarification, that this will not only allow them to upgrade their existing subject system, but it will also allow them to add thirty or forty more additional beds. So I want to know if that's in the plan, or if we'll have any further expansion. I'd also like to find out, even though Steve just stated that the money is not part of the petition, but it is on here, and everybody knows it. The petition said it wasn't their idea that that money went to the $100,000 for the renovation bathroom, which will be an amazing bathroom, I assume, but we have other needs in the town. I think that, one, we're selling it way too cheap, and, secondly, that the money should go in the general funds so the taxpayers can decide where it's best used, and if that is the best use for it, fine. Thank you.
Thank you. Would you like to address that?
Yes. Island Terrace has offered $125,000 for the acre. Island Terrace does not have the right to tell the town in any way, shape, or form how to decide to use that money. As far as in addition to pay the multimillion dollar renovations, that is true. Island Terrace has, is in the process of purchasing a license to add 22 beds, bringing our census from 77 to 99. And if anyone would like to speak to the ACO, or Kevin, or Mike, if you'd like to speak to the ACO from the DEP on that, that's fine. We do have permission to go up from 12,000 gallons, and I don't have the exact figure in front of me, to 15,588. Am I correct on that, Kevin? Close. 15,880, excuse me, is what they gave us to be able to pay for all of the renovations that Island Terrace requires. Island Terrace is technically, right now, a number of different additions. The original building was built in 1912 as a summer home. And as an example, the windows that are in that part of the building are vintage 1912. The other section was added in 1962, then 1967, and then 1985. And the entire facility needs upgrading on top of the septic system, so it isn't just the septic system that is at issue here.
I don't believe it's the taxpayers' legal responsibility to upgrade that, though. A theater market value, I've heard, just get anywhere, a nursing home gets anywhere between $4,000 and $7,000 a month for a bed. Adding the 22 beds is a couple of weeks' worth of what you want to pay for the property. And I think we'd sell ourselves very short if we sold it for that price, unexisted, to do the expansion. If it was to, here the existing septic system might be more far away, but if we're going to, two weeks of rent, and we're going to give away the business to expand, it's a private business, it's a private entity, and the taxpayers shouldn't be supporting it. I'm sorry, that's my opinion.
Thank you. You going to add to that, or? We don't necessarily need to have rebuttal back and forth, but I mean, if you have something to add, please do.
Just one thing. The Mass DEP, with the administrative consent agreement, is allowing Island Terrace to expand the 22 beds to a total of 99 beds on the site and build a wastewater treatment plant. So that has already been approved by the Mass DEP, and what happened? What we're looking to do now is still build the treatment plant, but just move the leaching from the island off the island. So buying the property from the town isn't what is going to allow them to expand. They can expand anyhow. It's just, it just enables the leaching area for the treated effluent to be located in a less sensitive area.
Thank you. Sir, would you like to address the group here?
I would, Mr. Moderator. Frank Stare at Sixth Crest Drive. To the people of Lakeville, I love this handout, but it's a little technical, certain parts of it. You know, if I can't understand it, I think we're in a lot of trouble. I think, for the Selectmen, Finance Committee, with all due respect, I believe that you're wrong, I believe that the underlying premise for this whole thing is wrong. Don't get me wrong, I like Island Terrace, okay? I think it's a pretty facility. But I think the underlying premise is it's wrong for a semi-rural residential town to sell off conservation land. I think we're setting a very bad precedent here, and the other factor is, and correct me if I'm wrong here, that Island Terrace is a for-profit business that pays taxes. And for us to help individual companies, individual businesses, okay, and improve their profit picture by selling off conservation land, I just think is a lousy deal.
Thank you. Sir?
I look at things a little different, even though it's a business. Unfortunately, Lakeville cannot provide water. You've got it at the town hall now, right? They've solved their problem. I think, also, that that part of that we want to sell, was that originally Betty's Net? And was it under conservation land then? And was it, was it under conservation land then? Does anyone know that, when it was, before we bought it?
No, Mr. Moderator?
No, it was not until it was purchased.
Now, is the conservation, uh, Conservation Committee, is that part of Lakeville?
We have our own conservation.
Is that the one that we just referenced earlier?
Yes.
Now, the fish and game thing, that's something else, right?
Yes.
All right, that sounds like, what am I going to get? So it seems to me that as a town, we should be looking at it differently to supply them, just like they were a hospital. They need water. If you can't do that, maybe what we should do is put a new pipeline to the place, that would solve their problem.
I, I think you're getting a little confused. It's not that they need water, they need septic system.
No, if they had, if they had water, that would, now they don't need, the septic system might be different.
No, I think that's, that's incorrect because the DEP doesn't want the septic system to go into, yeah, the water supply.
Well, as they say, and putting that aside, I think everybody should be on board to get, it seems like a simple thing to me. It all seems like what people are talking about is who's going to get what, how much cost. I look at it, what the facility does, where it's been in Lakeville, and it has many other things that contribute to our rural community, I think it's, it would be the advantage of everybody to be on board to push the thing forward instead of trying to hold it back. Because looking at what they, you know, if you look at some of the stuff they've got to do with these toilets, that's ridiculous, it's cars of water. So I mean, they, you know, to run a, run a facility like that, it doesn't cost nickels and dimes, that's all I can say.
Thank you.
I'll just say one last thing. The engineer just made, what?
Oh, you? I can't tell sometimes where the voices are. You're not really close enough to the mic in my view to think it was you, but go.
Testing, go ahead. The engineer just made my point. I thought, and a lot of people are in the impression that they needed this land to do the septic. The engineer just stated, they can do it with or without us doing this. Why would we consider taking a piece of land out of conservation restriction if it's not their last, only option? If they can do it with or without us, then why are we, if they're going to do it no matter what, they have the permits and the approvals, I, I don't see any reason then we take this off. There must be a financial, something for them that they waited this long and were willing to do this. So there got to be more to it than we're hearing. So we would just talk about their engineer, they can do it with or without us. So why are we going to start a precedent, taking land out of a conservation restriction for something that they really don't need?
Thank you.
Mr. Moderator, I, I don't want to be misunderstood here. I'm not necessarily against this, nor am I for it necessarily, but I wanted to state that it's my understanding that Island Terrace runs a, a wonderful nursing home facility and it's been my experience, I have to put my father in the nursing home, so I know something about them, and I think that we need to support a facility like this in town. My concern is, if they, if, if we allow this to go forward, is it going to reduce the effluent that's going into the soil in that area? And it's not, I haven't yet been persuaded that this is the case. I, I'm not concerned, I think the price is reasonable because it's all, it's my understanding that anything that goes there is going to be below the ground, it's not going to be the above ground thing. It's a property that, that is benign. So I just wanted people who may have listened to my previous words to understand that's how I felt about it.
Thank you.
Mr. Moderator?
Yep.
This is why we're not in the real estate business. But the, I think the biggest issue the gentleman raised earlier was with the water. There is no town water there. However, there is a, a private well that's designated as public that they use to service the property. And I believe it's a four-hundred-foot diameter circle on that that has to stay protected so you can't have any septic within any reasonable part of that area. However, I think the, the applicant, the petitioner is just trying to come up with some solution that they could say is sustainable, especially in this economy. I'm not sure if this should be the property for them or not. I think that they're just asking if we would allow them to at least pursue it further and see if, because it has to go through state legislation as well as DEP as well as Congress and everybody else. But I just wanted to know if they could get their blessing to go one step further, that's why they're here tonight.
Thank you. Sir, would you like to address this?
Yes, Dave Pierseki, Old Main Street. I'm kind of disgusted with the town, to be honest with you. Normally do we prevent any businesses from coming at the town because we want to maintain our rural residential flavor, but we don't even permit businesses that are very, very successful in the town. Yeah, they make money, well, I hope they do make money. Any business you were in would like to make money also. They do a tremendous service for the town. They're not asking for, this conservation land is being used for nothing. Think of it this way, if nothing else, if it's in the alfalfa field, the alfalfa will grow like crazy. Well, not with septic system. I mean, they haven't bought, we're asking for permission, we're allowing them, if we vote for this, to go ahead. Nothing's been sold, nothing's been bought, nothing's been finished. We don't want to come back after we vote to revoke against our vote as we did with the last article. Can't we just let business go in business, be successful, make some money, provide a service and, and be an asset to the town of Lakeville rather than to boot everyone out of the town because we want to be what? What do we want to be? Rural residential broke. I mean, we can't go into these things because we got paper in there.
Thank you. Yes?
I just want to reiterate this and make it perfectly clear, the hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars that was proposed initially on a piece of paper but never made it to the motion is not on the table. If the town of Lakeville, with the Division of Fishery, Wildlife and Conservation Commission and the state legislators and whoever else needs to get involved to get to a negotiated conclusion, that number is not going to be presented, it's going to, it could be something else further from that.
Okay. Thank you. Quickly.
When would the number be determined?
That depends. I mean, if.
Why does it depend?
Well, if the Division of Fishery and Wildlife says to the town of Lakeville, you know that land you have on Howard Road, divest of it, I want it to go into conservation restriction in order to make this happen. That's a lot of land there that we could get probably five thousand per acre to put it in conservation restriction ourselves. So there are, it's a whole host of things. The state legislator, the state may say, you're going to pay us because we're the ones who got involved with brokering that deal for Betty's Next. We have no idea what, what folks are going to come forward with.
Well, do we have the right to decide later on or have we committed ourselves at this time?
Absolutely, you have the right to do it. I mean, they're just, if you vote for this, it's given us permission to move forward on it, we'd have to come back to town meeting and know what the deal was.
Thank you.
Sir?
Mr. Moderator, Nelson Pratt, Captain's Lake. Maybe I just wasn't paying attention when the article was read because I was trying to read along with what was in print here. But what exactly are we voting on here? Are we, are we just voting for the process to go forward through some due diligence with the conservation in various state bodies? Or are we actually voting to potentially sell this property even though we don't know the amount? I, I'm really confused as to what we're voting on when we're just about to vote for something.
Sure. Town Council can address that. Thank you.
Thank you. Just to make clear, the article was drafted by the petitioner and when we looked at it, we realized that it needed to be revised because there are so many legal steps involved in this process. So the motion that is on the floor right now is different, but within the subject matter of what was noticed to everyone in the article. So I'm just going to read the motion again just so everyone can hear it before they, they vote, if that's all right. What was moved was to transfer from the Board of Selectmen for the purposes set forth in General Laws, Chapter Forty, Section Eight C, to the Board of Selectmen for the purposes of conveyance, the care and custody and control of a parcel of land containing one acre more or less, which land is a portion of the two town acre properties located at Long Point Road identified by the assessors as Parcell Seventy-One-One-One and Seventy-One-One-Two and described in a deed filed with the Plymouth Registry District of the Land Court as Document Number Five-O-Eight-Nine-Two-Three and recorded with the registry in Book Two-Two-Three-Five-Six, Page Two-One-Five, and in a deed filed with Plymouth Registry District of the Land Court as Document Five-Four-Three-A-O-Nine. And authorize the Selectmen to convey said parcel on such terms and conditions and for such consideration as the Selectmen deem appropriate and further authorize the Board of Selectmen to petition the General Court for approval of such conveyance under Article Ninety-Seven of the Amendments to the Massachusetts Constitution if such approval is deemed by the Board of Selectmen to be needed.
Hopefully that has answered your question. There's a lot of moving parts to this, but I think that was, hopefully that's clear.
I, I think it is, but will it require a second vote once all the details have been worked out? Or, or are we just allowing the Selectmen to convey and or whatever that word means, transfer, sell for some unknown amount of money and will never revisit this again at a town meeting?
Thank you.
I've just been told by Town Council, it actually does give us the power to convey based off of the Selectmen deem appropriate, but we can choose to bring it back to town meeting, the way this is worded.
That's, that's your answer.
Can't choose, will choose, maybe we'll choose, maybe we won't choose. Once we vote on this tonight, is it, whatever the outcome of that vote is, I, I guess I would ask the Selectmen, would you bring this forward once all the details have worked out for a second vote or would you just, are we giving you the authority to do it and that's that?
I don't speak for myself, but I feel that way, that it should be brought back to the townspeople so that they can vote on it again.
Okay, is that true, Steve? I guess I would ask Eric.
That's me, yes, Steve.
Maybe ask Eric and Scott, would you commit to doing that tonight or is that out of order?
Actually, I'd like to ask Town Council if this can be amended to include that. She says I don't need it. However, this could take five years and these three gentlemen might not be sitting here in five years, so. So Nelson, what you're asking is you would like to add another town meeting, no exact but, get permission for the actual sale price, is that what you're asking?
I think it's only reasonable to, to suggest that once the details, whatever they may add, may have a meaning, as you said, every five years from now, are presented to the town at that point in time for approval or not approval. It seems like we're doing something tonight and we really don't know where we're walking into here and we're.
I just talked to Town Council about the Selectmen bringing back this motion ourselves and we could word it that way so that the townspeople would vote on the actual deal.
Thank you. Thank you.
Sir?
Thank you, Frank Staret, Chris Drive. Just some clarification here, Mr. Moderator and to the Selectmen. You mean that an hour ago, you handed out pieces of paper here and the Article Three here and you raised the issue to vote on Article Three and what was read was something entirely different? We totally switch courses. Article Three here really should have been withdrawn and a new article substituted. There's a little swat of hand going on, what's going on?
Well, to bring you back to the beginning of this, this article was read by a petitioner. They signed, they got a hundred, over a hundred signatures to get to this town law. So they have every right to read their petition in front of the townspeople and have to vote on it. And we're just working through the details right now, just like you are.
So, so Article Three here as printed is totally null and void and worthless.
Only if you vote on it.
All right, I give up. What are we voting on? The one that was read.
The motion that was presented by the petitioner is what we're voting on. So what Town Council just.
But he didn't read this, so it's null and void, right?
The, the article was, was put on the warrant for purposes of notifying you related to what would be in the discussion, but what you're actually voting on is always presented at town meeting in the form of a motion.
Boy, this is some way to do business. You know, it's like bait and switch, right? You tell them one thing and then all of a sudden we switch. It should have been printed here. You know? Shouldn't it? I mean.
That's a personal opinion that's, I appreciate it, but it's, I don't have an answer. Mr. Marshall?
Bob Marshall from Barstow Street. I move to amend this article so that this article will be brought back to a future town meeting for final disposition.
Okay. We have a motion to amend the Article Three motion by adding at the end of that paragraph, or run on sentence if it is one, and further that the, prior to the disposition of the property, the article be brought back to a future town meeting for final disposition. So in essence, what that means is if we vote yes to amend, this will have to come back in front of town meeting before the transaction can occur. Does anybody want to speak to the amendment? No? Okay. We got a second. Is it related to the amendment? If you just. We'll deal with that after, after we have the amendment, I'll let you speak on that, but we're just going to get through the amendment first.
My understanding that if we vote on the amendment, the article passes as amended?
No, I think it's, we'll need to vote the amendment because if the amendment fails, the, the main motion will, will survive and then be voted on. So we have to vote the amendment.
We have to have two votes.
Correct.
Okay, that's not the procedure that has been done in the past by your predecessors.
Yes, it is.
I stand corrected or I stand contradicted at least.
Please sustain, right?
Okay, so this is a majority vote. Anybody has any comments related to this, they can say, but if not, we'll, we'll prepare the vote. I don't need to counter it, it's just a majority vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, so the amendment passes. Now we can move back to the original motion with that amendment. And ma'am, would you like to address the town meeting?
I'm here, I'm excited, I'm excited. Earlier when I spoke, I asked, I'm sorry, earlier when I spoke, I asked for clarification about the two colored maps. Town Council, am I correct? When you just read the article to us, I believe you referred to two pieces of property. I thought you said two. The woman who was the petitioner specifically told me two colored maps and a black and white map, that's three. I just think this is awfully vague. We don't, I'm not sure what we're selling, for what amount, more or less an acre, how much more, how much less? That just seems to be, it's too vague. And again, you referred to two, so which one do I get rid of? Am I, am I misunderstanding something again?
No, no, I think your, your question is clear, we're just waiting for someone to answer it. Mr. Moderator, my name's Mike Scott. We're proposing three potential sites for the filtration galleries, two of them are on one parcel, the North Valen Creek, and one is on a parcel, South Valen Creek. So there's two parcels in question that are possible.
possible sales to Island Creek. One would have two sites, one would have one site. So you see three sites on those maps.
Okay.
And those are just three options for location for infiltration galleries. Two of the options are, would be hosted on one piece of property, and the other, the third option would be hosted on a second piece of property. So two properties, but three sites.
Again, I just think this is awfully vague. Thank you.
It suggested I explain more or less than one acre. The issue here is, we don't know exactly how much is going to be needed for infiltration galleries. It could be a little bit more, or it could be a little bit less than one acre.
Thank you. Okay. At this point, I think we can vote this. This is going to require a two-thirds vote, so we're going to use the counters. I'm going to use our blue cards. Everybody that is in favor of the motion as amended, please raise your blue card.
Sixteen.
I heard sixteen. What was the other one?
Twenty-three.
Thirty-two.
Thirty-five.
Okay, you can put your blue cards down. And all those opposed, please raise your blue cards.
One, three.
Eight.
Six.
The motion passes 106 to 18.
Mr. Moderator, this is the last article, out of the number four.
I move that the town vote to transfer the care, custody, and control of the ten acre parcel described below from the Board of Selectmen for recreational purposes to the Board of Selectmen for conservation purposes, and for the purpose of conveying a conservation restriction and/or a declaration of restrictions thereof, and further to authorize the Board of Selectmen to convey to a governmental body or to a nonprofit charitable corporation or foundation a perpetual conservation restriction and/or a declaration of restrictions encumbering a portion of the parcel of land known as a Ted Williams camp, and described in a deed recorded in the Plymouth County Registry of Deeds, Book 7228, Page 61, which portion to be encumbered contains ten acres more or less and is shown approximately on a plan entitled Ted Williams Camp Conservation Plan, on file with the town clerk. On such terms and conditions and for subs-consideration which may be nominal consideration as the Board of Selectmen deem appropriate, or take any other action relative thereto.
Thank you. Finance Committee, your recommendation?
My unanimous vote, Finance Committee, vote to recommend approval of this article.
Finance Committee voted to recommend unanimously. Derek, would you like to speak to this?
Yeah, I'll give you the one-word answer. Turtles. And that's where we're at. But I'd like to actually have the plaque, Tom, if the bite you still have to speak to this. This is out of his board. I'd like to defer that to him.
What happened here is, we had an abandoned gravel pit, and we were going to propose football fields for football and lacrosse. Then National Heritage got involved, and now it is protected. That gravel pit that we were going to use, we cannot use, and that is a nesting area for turtles. I love the turtles. So we since have gone through the whole process. It's been approximately a $30,000 endeavor for the Parks Commission to get football fields that we much need for the football program and lacrosse programs. Basically, what it is.
Thank you.
Mr. Moderator?
Sure.
And we are all Conservation Commission. The land was cleared and mined for gravel, and then left alone, abandoned, long enough so that the turtles moved in. And now it's the turtles' home. And yes, natural heritage, National Heritage, this is a requirement, as I understand it, in order to clear all the other woodlot that we've just cleared. This is a requirement by the turtle people. Thank you.
Hi, Karen Quinn, Elton Pond Drive. I just have a question, if we can clarify the map. I have my glasses on, but I'm having a real hard time making this out. Is this southwestern portion of this property here, the actual pond? Is this the pond right here? I'm trying to figure out where this is. I walked back there, so I'm kind of familiar with the gravel pit, but I'm trying to figure out, is this portion of the end here, or is this?
Mr. Moderator?
Can anybody clarify?
Yeah, that is the, that is, I believe, the edge of the pond.
Okay. Yes. And does that anywhere come near where kind of that public access to the pond is? The former Ted Williams, um, camp beach?
No. Thank you.
Mr. Moderator?
To beat him to it. He was coming down when they jumped in front of you. No, that's okay.
Mr. Moderator, and to the townspeople, here's a piece of property that was deemed recreational, always. And someone comes along and says, you have turtles on the property. And the town has spent $30,000, taxpayers' money, working on agreements with National Heritage. My understanding is the town did a sweep of the area and said they found no turtles. Now, could there be a turtle there? Possibly. But none were found. We spent $30,000 with suggesting we take land that is deemed recreational and do a conservation restriction. It's ridiculous. I wonder why people don't want to build in the town. If this was a builder or a cranberry grower, who's to say that you just can't plant turtles, that you can say there's turtles on the property? None were found. Tell National Heritage, drop dead. Do what you want with the town. Seriously, with the Ted Williams camp, we paid tens of thousands of dollars for that property. Don't let someone put restrictions on it that are not needed. Tell them to drop dead. Vote it down. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, well, on that note, oh, yes.
Good luck telling Natural Heritage to drop dead. A conservation restriction, that doesn't mean you have, can't have passive enjoyment on that property, hiking trails and so on and so forth. It's a beautiful piece of property. It doesn't need to be all developed. And if you don't do this, you might be doing a restoration on that property you just cleared. Thank you.
Thank you. This motion requires a two-thirds vote. Seeing no one else at the microphones, I'm going to assume that we're ready to vote on it. So anybody who is in favor of this, please raise your blue card.
Nineteen.
Thirty.
Twenty-three.
Thank you. All those opposed, please raise your blue card. The motion passes 88 to 15.
Mr. Moderator, move to adjourn.
Second. Motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The meeting is adjourned.
Joe Seaman, can you talk to the stage?